You're seeing the equation.
I will. If that's stuff.
Yeah. Just want to get a powerful sharing information.
I have.
Definitely.
Yeah, there's no contract.
What?
Obviously.
I'm not for drug or music.
You don't get that.
Well, thanks today.
Well, we have this.
I don't know what he was typing.
Well, we can, we can just.
And the Chinese.
And all of that.
I'll change my words.
Unless you.
And they interview the higher.
A lot of that's only more than a fifty one.
Because you can't.
You should give.
Talk a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can do that during.
Yep.
But I think.
Um. Well.
If everybody would like to follow this meeting to order, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
Goodbye, United States of America. And to your republic, which stands one nation, united in this law. With the peace and justice.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Anderson.
President.
Datafer.
President.
Doobie.
President.
Holstein.
President.
Yarris.
Here.
Rabish here.
Kuchar.
President.
Seven.
President. Like to welcome everybody, new staff members and all the parents out there and community members. Thanks for coming. Hopefully we'll get out before the storm hits or it gets too bad. Uh. Additional releases changes to the agenda.
I approve the agenda, President.
We have motion support, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Community comments on the agenda items? Anybody like to address the board as possible? Four minutes.
A word number brought up some concerning facts in the last four weeks that led me to start asking questions on the whole process of the interview. I'm going to focus on the building that affects my students from that is a high school or middle school. Dr. Brown emailed, I received from her that she received the teacher applicants as an application paid group candidate. However, our deal of policy state, all letters of application and placement office credentials shall come from central office. Then it shall be sent to the appropriate principals for a filing. So were our own policies not followed? Because our building principal was only present for two interviews and was not sent all the applications for the candidates. But for our, for our policy, he should have been sent all applications. So we had many grads that didn't even make it to the interview stage. These grads have proven themselves by many different things they have done in our building already. But. We couldn't get to the interview stage. We hear from Mr. Kowalczak and the board about hiring our homes, yet they didn't get to this stage, they didn't get to the interview stage. And that our own policies were not followed. Please explain to us how we can be assured that the best candidates were selected. For Dr. Brown's email, it states, Mr. Kowalczak did not oversee this because this is my job. And he trusts that I will make the best decision. He takes care of administrative candidates and I take care of future candidates. I do not have to get anything approved by him. Is it not his job to oversee all aspects of this district? Leads me to my next question. What is our building principal's job description? If our director of instructional services is overseeing hiring and staff. We are not questioning the capability, we are simply trying to understand the hows and whys. Please understand that as a parent, I am concerned with all the changes we are doing again this year. These students have lost a lot of research people over the last few years and are starting to have trust issues with our staff because of the high overturn. I know this is not ideal for admin or the board, but we understand why this happens. All these kids see it as losing a well-trusted person. We are curious to why certain people who have built relationships with staff, parents and students did not get to the interview stage. Were they just not qualified? How is eliminating our behavioral interventionist Paul Poisington in the vast interest of our students? These students he has helped guide, coach, and vendor safe person to go to. These are the students that are going to be suffering the most. These kids truly need someone who is a consistent trusted adult in their lives. And Paul has done nothing but prove to be that person.
We have one more minute.
Time and time again. Furthermore, not only did these kids lose another trusted reference person who they knew absolutely cared about them, not only in school, but outside of school. We added this full-time position to our new middle school AP who already has a full-time position plus is a safety coordinator for the district. This will be too much for one person and we cannot see how she will be able to dedicate herself to the best of her abilities to our students. How is this fair to our students or our new middle school assistant principal?
Thank you. Anybody else like to adjust? Board on the agenda items, Ms. Power?
Kind of going on the same thing. I feel like the last board meeting that I had attended where we were given the. The insight that we were going to be adding the position to our G middle school assistant principal to break up. The high school students from the middle school students, how they were handled with behaviors and discipline and things like that. I feel like we were misled because nowhere during that board meeting where we and was the public given information that we were eliminating our behavior and our own position. We were all super excited, we're going to have a middle school assistant principal and that way the middle school could be handled by one person and the high school students could be handled by another. And then we find out that that grant-funded position was actually removing the position for Mr. Poisington. Very frustrating because not only did we remove that position, but we then laid him off and said. Now we're hiring for an assistant football coach and we're hiring for an assistant or a wrestling coach. We had those positions filled with again, somebody who was trusted, who built relationships with our students, who was a consistent figure in their lives for the past couple of years. And now we're hiring a new position for a new coach for those positions. Um, kind of interesting that we had to let him go for all of his positions. Um, and he wasn't given the opportunity to, to apply for one of these other positions. And again, I'm not saying that the candidates that are there are new people are not qualified and aren't going to do a great job. But we've lost a great person with Mr. Poisington in this district. Um, so again, I feel like we've been misled that when that position was said that we were going to add that position. Nowhere did it say that we were going to be laying off and losing a trusted individual to these students. Um. Consistency, we've had like there's so much turnover and I know it's everywhere, it's not just this district. And I know that those are questions that you're trying to solve and how we. But obviously it is our kids who are, are paying the price for that. Our kids are paying the price with another new AP, another new AD, another new face in the building. Um, it's, it's just getting really frustrating. Who can these kids go to? Who can they trust? We've had a lot of changes in the past year alone, a lot of going the past couple of years. And that one really kind of hit hard because we really as parents thought we were gaining something, we didn't gain anything. We transferred the, the funds to that, a different position and we didn't gain an extra set of hands. We just transferred it, so.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board? Consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the consent agenda and beta bills. Four hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-two cents.
Support. Good motion of support, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Betafer.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Doobie.
Yes.
Holstein.
Yes.
Yarris.
Yes.
Rabish, yes. Kuchar.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you, motion carries. Communication, Mr. Kowalczak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, want to start by seeing if anyone is interested in being a delegate for the Lansing Assembly on November ninth. I received an email asking if I would like to have one of the board members be part of this. Uh, they decide the M A S B's position on different, uh, a variety of issues. And if any of us, any of you are interested and would like to go to Lansing on November ninth, I would, um, send your name into them as being a delegate. There's no pressure, we don't have to do it, but if anyone is interested, send me a message or let me know and, and I will throw your name and any questions.
Is that for the delegate assembly that they?
Yeah, I, I plan to go to the conference again this year, so.
Is that at the conference?
Yeah.
So you would already be there, so.
That's my plan.
Perfect.
Got that in the calendar.
Alright, nice. So I will send that in. Yes, good. Um, school resource officer, I am recommending that we agree to a contract with the Bay County Sheriff's Office for our school resource officer. Just to give you some, some more information on this, um, we did work with the city a few times. I know the last time we were given the, the county's proposal, it was mentioned to go back to the city and see if there's a, a different offer that could be worked on. Um, and that was the forty-five thousand for twenty hours of work per week. Um, but we would still have the Lynnwood position that had the fifteen thousand for the time there at Lynnwood because the Pin County Police can't go to Lynnwood. The county sheriff, what they gave us was an estimated max amount. And there's a lot of things that go into this, this variation of cost. If the deputy was hired at step one, which they don't know who would be hired, um, it would be at sixty-nine and a half thousand if it was at step four, eighty-seven. Then under a half, eighty-seven, three, um, for that full-time forty-hour per week position that would be shared between Lynnwood and, uh, the Pin County Campus. Now that's the max, it can go lower. Um, last year we did look at Bangers', um, budget and they were estimated at six thousand dollars for supplies and only used fifteen hundred of, of them. And that's where they talked about the true cost at the end of the year where you get money back if you don't wreck a police car, you get so much back if you don't. Different things that we could get that money back. There's also insurance levels, if it was a single person that had, you know, single insurance versus family insurance, um, it could also drop from there. So, um, looking at this, um, my recommendation is to, to try this for a year and to see, um, where we would be. Looking at our safety grant money, possible thirty-one A if needed, because even this is still a big jump compared to what we've had before. But I, I think we, we want an officer in our buildings as much as we can, um, and we have some grant money that can help this next year to see if that's going to work. So I guess I'm looking for your, your idea or your thoughts if, um, to move forward on that.
How many hours were they in Lynnwood?
A couple a day, like one, in the morning, an hour, afternoon, an hour, and I get probably buried. I would think I sometimes maybe a little bit longer or less.
Yeah, so equal to about two hours a day. Um, I want to say, and Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, it was contracted for three hundred and fifty hours for the school year.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and we kept track, of course. We're paying for it, we want them there.
I'm fine pursuing that, I know you've, you know, looked at this back and forth, does anybody have discussions or thoughts or?
I, I'd rather scrap back to the twenty-five thousand myself, I don't think that this is a budget I can afford. For one year, I understand, I appreciate your, what you said, I spoke with you about it, I considered it quite a bit, but, uh. Just to bring somebody in for a year and then to lose them again.
Well, and we don't know if we would lose them, it would be.
We don't have the money to budget for that and. It's going to increase with the other staff choices we got to make.
Now, did you say the forty thousand? Forty-five thousand was the last.
Twenty-five thousand for the, go back to where we were.
Now, they did mention that, if we wanted to go back to that, it would be a drive-through in the morning, drive-through in the afternoon, not really being in the mid-building unless we needed them. The forty-five thousand is where we're at now for the twenty hours per week with the city, they increased it twenty thousand from last year. So forty-five thousand for twenty hours here, plus the fifteen thousand from Lynnwood is sixty thousand for probably thirty hours a week. So it, in, like I said, it's a little bit up in the air, is it going to be sixty-nine thousand or is it going to be eighty-seven thousand? And then you have those true costs where they come, they come off, so. It could be close to the same, it could be close to sixty thousand for a full forty hour per week, we don't know depending on who is hired. But we have to decide and you're right, I mean, that is an option, Pin Conning for forty-five thousand, um, at twenty hours a week. Uh, but the twenty-five thousand was kind of discussed, but not really as an option. Um, it was mentioned if we wanted to go back to what we had in the past with just being a drive-through, the parking lots before and after school and if needed, we call them. Which we can do now, you know, with no relationship.
They have to serve us.
Yeah.
Yours also we don't have in the budget. Use yours stating we don't have it.
Well, we are, we, we are taking it from the, uh, the grant that's available, but it's a one-year grant.
True.
And so it is, we're planning on it going way next year unless we find this on general fund.
Yeah.
The following year.
So.
And that grant money could be used for other things, which we have an administrator coming in to help us with safety, so.
So.
Be happy to use your motion.
Yeah, we can either do a motion, I kind of need, I think we need to have discussion on this as far as which direction are we going to have any, you know, uses time. You know, and again, with each of these, a twenty-five thousand, the forty-five thousand, potentially seventy or ninety thousand, it's how much time are you getting? You know, in the building, so twenty-five thousand gets me.
I mean, a ninety thousand, that's a military salary, you're talking about another full-time.
Deal.
Military staff, we just were squeezing to get the one we had.
I agree.
So that's just, that's just my concern.
I, I, I know, and I know if we were taking this vote back in January after the incident, you know, it might be, it'd be different, you know, and. I think the community wants to make sure we don't have that happen again and that's unfortunate that a lot of schools are having, I mean. The, the money that we spent for the blocks behind the doors that we do for security cameras, I mean, all that stuff that you didn't have to do thirty, forty years ago, you know? So I guess what's the pleasure of this body as far as the, you know, we have it in the budget this year. Would you? I mean, yeah, could we, there's a lot of things we could spend on different, this is again, I think it's my argument is, um. I, I want to make sure that the people, not just the students and not just the parents at home, but all the people, the staff. Cause the staff, what they went through that day from superintendent on down, um, really was eye-opening and I want them to feel safe and secure. Um, so.
Is it something that I should do a survey and see what the community thinks? Like, would they rather have someone full-time and spend money from the district?
And that's from other board members on directions you take?
Well, yeah, I'd like to see somebody in the building all the time. That's imperative really, as far as I'm concerned.
I mean, we never, we've never dealt with it until last year. Having somebody in the building. You know, there's going to be times they're not in the building, but you know, the fact that. Students and the staff know they're there, does that change less than what the kids think they're going to get away with?
For building coverage last year. Cause at the time of that incident, you, you took care of it properly. To your credit.
It was.
The officers were called in.
Mm-hmm. Um. It varied, I bet the first half of the year was about. Four to six hours a week. And then working on contracts, it went to twenty hours per week is what we requested and I would guess it averaged fifteen to seventeen hours a week when the contract said twenty hours per week. Now, again, that's in the building. I, I should say they probably fulfilled that twenty hours by doing paper reports, by things that were happening where we didn't see them in the building. So I, I need to give our, uh, SRO credit with that, with saying that, you know. Second half of the year, the twenty hours were probably met with all the stuff that you had to do not just being in the building. Cause there's a lot that goes into it every time there's a vague bond and, you know, it could be four hours of paperwork.
See, I understand what went on and the situation ended correctly. But from my experience. Changes in a heartbeat. And then it's not going that way. So having somebody that's trained. That goes through all the weapons training, all the hand-to-hand combat things. That's, that's where we'd be missing out. Yeah, we have our staff people to de-escalate the situation, but. They don't go through those trainings.
No.
And I, I know how many hours that we do on that stuff that's.
I mean, one of the other things is that. The community knows that their officers are only scheduled for drop-off and pickup and that. The middle of the day or anytime after before that, you know, it's kind of. Like better term, in season and I just, I'd like to have some contracted hours where. At their convenience, it means they come in and they become a liaison where the students get to know them, they can reach out, you know, another person that they have. Uh, in the community, both in school and intern, you know, maybe even out of school, so. But we need to narrow this down so we can. Give Mr. Kowalczak some direction to go. So do you want to?
I, I wouldn't make the motion.
Okay.
Go ahead with the, the, the county sheriff's department to, uh. Do this year. Service for us.
Okay. So the motion is to go with Mr. Kowalczak's recommendation of the county sheriff for the forty hours per week. And for him to kind of search that more and get a contract finalized that he can bring to the next meeting. Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second? Support from Ms. Anderson? Any discussion, further discussion? Take a roll call vote, please.
Just give me one second.
Doobie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Betafer.
Yes.
Holstein.
Yes.
Yarris. Rabish, yes. Kuchar.
Yes.
Six one.
Thank you. You have your march.
Yes, thank you.
Good discussion, thank you.
Yeah. Um, soccer field meeting, we had a meeting last week, uh, on the soccer field with our athletic director, our school board president, Dan Lapin, our general contractor, True Green Lawn, Marlowe Sprinklers and Sova Turf Company. Um, it, it hasn't been looking the way I wanted it and I got everybody together, so there's no fingers pointing at, well, yes, because of this or because of that. Uh, we had a great conversation, kind of laid out the plan for the rest of this fall. I learned something because, um, they talked about True Green, talked about continuing the fertilizing and the, the herbicide for the weeds. And I mentioned that's costing us a lot of money for something that probably could have been done or should have been done before. And Marlowe said, no, we are paying that, we're currently paying for the weeding and the, the fertilizer, which was great, I didn't know that, that's never come across my desk. So that was good to hear, but there are these big clumps of grass, it's called, and they said that really doesn't count for the, the herbicide, that would be extra amount because it's a grass. And the contract says there will be grass planted and it is the grass, it's just a different kind. So that may cost us a little bit, I don't think a ton, but it's, I mean, it's big clumps of, it's completely different than the grass that they planted. So, but again, it was a, a, a good meeting, the afterwards, I've seen people on the field the last three days since that meeting, um, they have been filling in holes that are low spots around the sprinklers. I've seen them there two days doing that, um, the sprinkler company was also adjusting to make sure the water's going in the right spot, so. They also talked about aeration versus rolling because I've had some people ask me, well, why aren't we rolling it to make it smoother? And it was brought up that when you roll it, it compacts that ground so the grass can't spread and grow more. So aerating and putting the little holes throughout will help spread that grass and it's coming in nice in, in many areas. Uh, but it doesn't look like it will be ready this fall, uh, to play on because we want it done right, looking the right way.
So. When we, uh, get rid of the clumps of the grass, are they coming back to seed those areas?
Yes, in September, beginning of September is when they said that they would be reseeding the bare spots, yes.
Took us to do that when they aerate.
Yep.
They'll aerate and seed at the same time.
Yeah, so that's, that's the update on that and we do have, um. The goals are in, the nets are in, uh, the scoreboard, in the last meeting I did talk about. They gave us three locations for the electricity being run for the scoreboard and I mentioned it might be the best to have at the cheapest by the pump house. And I've been thinking about that and Coach Krebinkowski also told me if we're going to have a press box halfway down, we need electricity to go that way. So I'm thinking that back corner where we originally thought it does cost a few thousand more. But if it's on the east side and the sun is shining on it, it'll be just like our football scoreboard where there's certain times of the day or game, you can't even see it because the sun is shining right on those lights. And if it was on the west side, now the sun doesn't shine on it, so. Um, I think we do it the right way so that it's visible, it can be seen and if we're running the electricity to the spot where the, the consent, not concession, the storage and, um. Announcer's booth will be anyway, then that will all be together, so I'll keep you updated on that. Um, any other questions about the soccer field? You hit that pretty good, it was a good meeting.
It was, it was very productive, everybody was there hands-on deck to solve the problem and give us a good quality field, so it was, it was a very good meeting.
It was good. Uh, opening staff day, uh, I'm not, I won't talk too much about it because some of our admin may, but we had an early start this year, we, we started a week early with our teachers, uh, than normal. And that was because we had the opportunity to see, uh, or have guest speaker, Dr. John Hodge come in from Virginia. Uh, Dr. Hodge discussed how positive relationships that staff have with their students can affect their future. Uh, he's the president and co-founder of the Urban Learning and Leadership Center, which is an organization that focuses on student achievement and reduction of the achievement gap. And the people that were coming up to us afterwards on our walk from the gym to central office or where he parked, everybody was saying one of the best speakers they've seen, so. Um, a little bit of a stress to start that week early, you know, we'll have next week off, the teachers will, where they won't have to be in, but, um, we heard that it was worth it, that they were happy that they were able to see him today and hear him, hear his message, so that was great. And then just a great week of professional development is scheduled, I want to thank Dr. Braun for, for organizing that and, um, getting everything going in the right direction, so it's great. Uh, our safety entry has started, they laid, uh, cement today and they're getting that started. Where, you know, hopefully that will set up and they'll, they'll start putting the posts up and getting that, so you should see that. They had told me the big machinery and everything will be out of there before school starts. Um, but there was some backorder on some of the fencing or the gate that needs to come in, so it might not be totally completed, but there's not going to be. Heavy equipment around the sidewalk where, you know, students could possibly be, they wouldn't be, uh, if that was the case, so I was glad to hear that. Uh, and then finally, um, our athletic director, Mr. Huber is going to discuss our, uh, digital go-fan situation. We, we announced last week that we are going to be going digital with tickets and there was some, quite a few community concerns and questions. He's going to talk about those, I'm not going to get into that, what I wanted to tell you was that when we have a method that secures the safety of our staff, I, I think we need to go with that. Because we currently or in the past have had some of our ladies walking through parking lots with hundreds of dollars of cash in their hands in a box in the dark. Or from the baseball field and, and then taking it a deposit to the bank. We can avoid that with this and there's many reasons, it's, it's a good thing, but there's going to be some roadblocks. Um, but I think just knowing that that's a safety thing with not having a lot of money on some of our workers walking through the parking lot, um, we will. We will get over these hurdles and, and make it a good thing and, and Mr. Huber will talk about some of those other good things. But it's, it's been a hot topic because it's a change and there are some, some roadblocks that, that we think we've crossed, but, uh, you know, we'll get that word out.
Give a quick update on the playground, central playground.
Playground, um, oh, you're going to do that? You go ahead, I know a little bit about it, she probably knows a lot more than me, go ahead.
Do you want to know or do you want to add in?
We can do it, I guess, anybody have any other questions for Andy? Thank you.
Alright. Perfect.
Um, so Keith Poco was out and started working on the tile when they got, um, down into our current tile system. He found a lot of our issues on why we were holding water there. Uh, one of the particular tiles had been drilled into for one of the pieces of equipment, um, cement.
Went right through.
And poured full cement. So he was able to clean out our tile to the point that what was there that could. So he was able to clean out our tile to the point that what was there that could be maintained and used is open back up. He also laid new tile, multiple runs of it and got everything good as far as that's concerned. They don't fill it back in and it's a process to get it filled back in because it has to rain and kind of refill tight around the tile. So Russ Trox, one of the maintenance guys donated his disc and him and Brian Turner, one of the mechanics who's also a farmer, have been out there and trying to slowly get that process back down. They do it, they let it rain and they. So as far as the tile goes, it's all fat. Once they are able to till it up, we'll plant grass and get that coming. But it's going to be dirty for a little while. It's going to be a process to get grass on there. As soon as the tile was laid, I contacted the playground company and let them know we were ready for delivery and installation. And he called me back to let me know that his installer retired. And he is doing everything that he can. He knows our student first day and he is trying to get us installed before the first day of school, but he can't guarantee me. But he understands where I was coming from. I was very nice to him and tried the honey version and so we, he puts us in front of some of them that aren't being so nice to him. We are trying to have a playground at Central. If not, John has balls ordered and ropes and we'll have nothing for the kids to do.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Other administrators?
I'll vote for that. Just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Qualtich had said about opening day. It was so nice to see all of our staff come back and all of our new faces, all the teachers. Being able to collaborate together and our new staff would be a great, great addition to everything going on. Dr. Hodge was fantastic in our message, especially with our SEL mental health that we've been pushing. Definitely hit home for our teachers, just, you know, being that person for our kiddos and, you know, both of us had such great feedback afterwards. They were just ecstatic to have him hearing that message. And I mean, everyone was just so great to be able to come back, given it's a week early, you know, it was out of the norm, but it was absolutely worth it. So that was really nice. Thank you to Mr. Kuchar showing up for breakfast and listening to all of our field at the beginning. It's really nice to see you. But yeah, just ready to get going, get everyone back in here on the twenty eighth. Our buildings, I thank our custodial staff this morning, but I can't get over how great our buildings look right now. With everything nice and shiny, ready to come back.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll go. So the workers came out to install the fiber that was part of the heat rate project that we got awarded, you know, like a year ago. That's the way the cycles go. As they were digging, sorry, it's not funny, but they realized that all the fiber was direct burial instead of being in a conduit like it should be. So they're going to use the old fiber to pull the new fiber. And they can't because it's just like twenty five, thirty years ago when they put it in, they just direct burial it around. So, long story short, there's going to be a bore coming in hopefully this week and they're going to be tearing up the grass in some areas in front of the building here across the street, over in this parking lot and then to the warehouse. I told them not to mess with the new asphalt that was just laid in front of the warehouse. But if you hear anything from the community or you drive by and you see big holes, that's what it is. So they're going to fill it in when they're done and seed it where they can. They're going to take care of it, but for a little bit, it's going to be kind of chaos.
Still under construction. Other administrators?
I provided a board package with you today. I just want to highlight some things that were going on last week. One really cool thing that I was able to go to at SPSU was our chief science officer event. We had four students participate, well, yeah, four, yep. Adriana Welch, Logan Development, Leila Poco and Serenity Lookinville. So this was something that all the Great Lakes Bay students were doing. So I was able to go there and it was just a really cool thing. It was like a, kind of like a show and tell type. You just kind of walk around from station to station, but our kids were presenting to different adults, different kids. It was a really cool thing to see them in that light, really excited about the science projects that they made. Michelle Newmeyer was, was involved in that, helping kind of coach them for that event. And so big thanks to her for being involved in that. Very cool activity and I'm glad that we are participating and I think we'll continue to participate in that moving forward. Last week, I believe it was, we went, Mr. Huber and a couple of coaches and I went to the Jack Pine Conference, kind of kickoff meeting. Talked about, you know, teams that are joining, just Oklahoma Heights, St. Louis, Middletown, Black Creek. And, what's the last one?
Stand it.
Stand it.
I thought you were doing it on purpose.
It's like drained in there, right? So we had a really good time talking with other coaches in the, in the Jack Pine Conference. Really excited about, looks like moving forward. Open house, so our open house, our open house meet and greet is August sixteenth. The sixth grader is going to have a special kind of event, team building type activity that's going to start at ten thirty on the sixteenth. And then our meet and greet for the rest of the grades between one and three that day as well. So excited for the opportunity to provide for our sixth graders to know their very nervous coming to the building. This event's going to be able to kind of stop that a little bit and that they'll be ready to go for the first day of school. Yeah, and then the last thing is I was able to partake in the leadership and diversity meeting with SPSU. We've had students go there since I've been here. Leadership opportunities, diversity in the Great Lakes Bay region with other schools. So principals, Matt, superintendents, I don't think they're there, I think it was just principals in the Great Lakes Bay. And we talked with the SPSU leadership and diversity coordinator, really excited about that. And this year we get to send three students to, to that. We usually will drive them up there a couple of times a year and they'll get to collaborate with other students in the Great Lakes Bay. So really excited about that opportunity as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So for Linwood, we have our back to school night next Wednesday, August twenty third from five thirty to six forty five. So doing a little different, instead of doing our typical meet and greet, we're having all parents come in right at five thirty to welcome fifteen, twenty minute thing. And then the kids will be able to go visit classrooms for about ten to fifteen minutes. And then parents will have the opportunity to attend two sessions where teachers are going to talk about their classroom expectations. That way everyone starts the year on the same page. And then if they have multiple children, they'll be able to go to a second session to see a different classroom. And then we've already worked with our families who have more than two children to get to, you know, all the information they need. And while that's going on, the kids are going to be out on playgrounds, so fingers crossed it does not rain next Wednesday night, having pop schools and kind of just enjoying the new. Well, we have a new GSRP playground for our two to five year olds. So anybody older than that, they'll be on the regular stuff, but the, the younger kids can climb on the, the new playground. And then I just want to reiterate about today with Dr. John Hodge, it was great. My staff loved hearing everything that he had to say. The one thing that hit home to me because I, I did work, you know, through the summer and saw Carol, our custodian and her crew of Lisa, Kim and now Michael Ryder, they really worked their muscles off. Getting the building ready, inside, outside, even our maintenance guys. And John Hodge, his book, you can get in the way. He said that having a nice shiny floor, and you can kind of take that as to anything in the building, has a disposition of point six one for effect size and six points can be point six zero to two point O is extreme effect. So I take that as our custodians have pride in our buildings, our kids can have pride in the building to then they'll learn more and better. So kudos to our custodians. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Hello. So just to kind of touch base a little bit here as far as the Go Fan, just to give you guys more info. We obviously had a lot of questions and concerns, so pretty sure we nailed them all, so hopefully. But what I did today too is in our social media, I sent out like a step by step process. A lot of it was transfer, like how you transfer tickets, buy them. So I have all those that I attached to that, so they should hopefully have those, have access to those now, our community does. So, but yeah, I mean, after doing research here and stuff, I've been super excited, honestly, to dig in deeper with this. So I mean, it provides contactless payment, so kind of like what we touched on earlier, like safety for our, you know, staff. We don't have, you know, we can speed up the process, you know, it's just more efficient that way too. It elevates the fan experience, so it's pretty cool in the app, like if you, you'll harp Pankoning and it'll, you'll be able to follow not just that team, but all sporting events coming up and being able to purchase tickets too. So that's a pretty cool thing to do. And then it'll also customize our ticket sales. So eventually if we want to, we could put like our seasonal tickets on there as well, so people don't have to worry about like the hard copies anymore, which is also a big benefit. But I mean, MHSAA right now, you can't get in, in like districts or regional, they only require Go Fan. So it's a transition that even the state's doing. Our conference also, there's two schools that have already, are already using Go Fan. So it looks like it's going to be a trend, you know, moving forward. And then also too, we, I mean, just some thoughts, like I think it'll be very beneficial for our youth camps coming up. Instead of having coaches and parents are running, trying to collect all the money, now they can just go right on there. And I mean, it, it had the streamlined bookkeeping option where we can keep track of everything by the second, which I think is pretty beneficial as well too. No surcharge. I know that was one of the big concerns too here, so wanted to make that, you know, clear too. It's like there, it's just the, the fee, the six dollar fee that we're charging and that's it. And yeah, tickets are transferable. That was another big question we had. So if you bought the tickets, they are easily transferable. It's one of the sheets that I posted to, so it's a nice three or four step process to be able to do that, so. Yeah, we're still going to offer the, at, at lunch, we'll still offer the students to buy those tickets too if they want them as well, so they can still go in and buy those. So we're not taking that away or anything like that. And same thing with our season passes, our athletic office will still have them, so people will come and purchase them. So yeah, we're excited about it moving forward for sure. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
In the GSRP program, our numbers are looking real good for that for the three classrooms. Two classrooms currently have fifteen students apiece and you can have up to sixteen. And our third classroom has eleven. By the time that starts in, on September eleventh, that will probably do four because they usually are. At Central Elementary, we're going to try something different this school year. We are not going to have a traditional meet and greet like we did in the past. On Monday, the twenty eighth, we have divided our kindergarten students up as morning group and an afternoon group. So parents will bring their child with them, stay with them, listen to the teacher about the expectations and procedures in the class. Stay about two hours, we'll take those folks home. Afternoon group will come in and do that, same thing. So we're going to see how that goes. We sent out a survey to parents, asking them previously, what did you think of this idea? Got some positive feedback on that, so that's part of the reason we're going to try it. We'll have a post survey and see how that goes, just to see if it was worth our effort to try to do that. There will be an opportunity for parents on Wednesday, September thirteenth, between three and four thirty to visit classrooms of grades one through five. And so that kids do have the opportunity to come to the school prior to the start of school. On August twenty one and twenty two, we will have an informal walkthrough. Teachers won't be present. Parents are aware of that for grades one through five. And they can walk in the building, find their classroom and they'll at least know how to enter the building, where their room is. We are currently looking for two GSRP pair of pros and two one on one pair of pros at Central Elementary. If you know anybody that would like those types of jobs, have them give me a follow up, talk to them about that. Our enrollment at Central Elementary right now is three seventy six.
Thank you.
Earlier this summer, you had talked about the kindergartners coming the second day of school, did that?
Yeah.
Yeah, with this, that's. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. And then the second day of school will be ride the bus, come in, just like you hope for the next hundred seventy nine days.
It's literally, and also we're not just Central.
They're going to try it out. They're kind of piloting it. A kindergarten teacher wasn't interested as of right now.
Okay.
So we're just doing it like we usually do.
Okay.
Anybody left? All right, public comments again. Anybody like to address the board?
I wasn't planning on talking, but then you guys had to talk about public safety. So why that wasn't, yes, 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 let's do this right away. I was like, what is going on here? Isn't Mr. Qualtich's job, his job requirements do not say take a gun off of a student. So yes, we can find money, we can find money for everything else. Public safety, having someone in our building. We like the police officers we have right now, had good, got escorted by one. Tried to go on the back way, okay, I'm looking, I'm looking to pay. And he saw me and he escorted me to the athletic office. I was like, thank you. Upper teacher saying hi to me on the way. I'm like, I promise you, I'm not a stranger in the building. But I didn't have my ID anywhere, so I was sitting in the car. But we do like the officers that we've had. But yeah, having someone in our building more, yes, yes, and yes, I don't think a single parent is going to tell you, no, I don't think we should have police officers in our school more often. This is something that's important and we really got that made up all the school year. But I think it's for anything, like, yes, there's these everywhere. Thrown away, that's my philosophy right now. But yeah, that is a huge thing. My other thing is, are we ever going to get to play on the soccer field? Really want to play on it. Well, I don't want to play on soccer field. I promise my child loves to play on soccer field. He'll be playing on the other one on Wednesday, plus his little heart that he likes to rock. But yeah, so we really would just like to know at a date. I know there's seniors that would like to eventually get to play on it, even if it's not the boys. I know there's a senior girls mom here that I know her daughter would like to play on the field this year. But yeah, those are my only two things. I just want soccer field. Yes, yes, purpose.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address this?
Yes, so correct me if I'm wrong, you guys just voted back in a forty hour police officer from the county, which means a man sitting in front of me just lost his job. That I, I'm not sure how that's going to work. Again, we talked about our kids trusting and having building relationships and stuff, and they've built a relationship with him in the past year and a half. And now we're talking again about bringing somebody new in. So I just was kind of curious if that, if I read that, heard that right or how that's going to work. And I know I've brought it up before and I implore you guys to please remember that parents work. And there are ten parents minimum that wanted to be here this evening. And they could not be here because five thirty does not work for them because they work. I think it's great that we're trying new things at the elementary, but as a mom and a working mom, that kindergarten thing like just gave me like anxiety because how many working parents are going to have to send grandma or auntie or somebody to do that? And it might be a great thing. I, I think it's going to be awesome for the ones that can do it, but there's going to be some that can't. I keep saying this, anytime we have a meeting, oh, let's do it at three thirty for the, the school. I'm sorry, it was in my mind here, Ms. Ross with the, the food administration. At three thirty, people are working. At five thirty, people are working. It, it's just really, really, really difficult. We need to accommodate every parent, whether we do one at three thirty and one at five thirty, one at seven thirty. We have to remember that we're just hitting a small demographic of people. And there are so many parents that would be more involved if it worked with their schedules. Likewise, I know this is kind of the same thing, but not. There are also a large group of children that wanted to be here today to support Mr. Waddington, who were told that they left practice today, they would not be to play during it. They're on the field right now and they would like to be here in support of him. And if they step off that field, they're missing it. We want our kids to be involved, but we're telling them that they can't leave a practice to come to a school meeting. But we can let them out of school at two thirty or one thirty to go to an athletic event. But we can let them out of school at 2:30 or 1:30 to go to an athletic event, but we can't let them miss practice to come to a school board meeting. We really need to start looking at how we're gonna best support these kids, because they're the next generation that's gonna be sitting on that school board meeting, okay? They're the next generation of parents sitting in these seats. We want them here. And if they are passionate about supporting that person that they trusted on the football field, and on the wrestling mat, and down the hall in the classroom, they should have been allowed to be here.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board?
I'm getting the same thing Liana got. Are we losing Officer Gray? This will be another huge hit, that I am not willing to stand here and support. Well, Matt, I have watched these kids build a relationship that was very hard for this officer, and they finally have someone they're going to, they're talking to. I went to the Black Party of town, and I watched those kids run to him, that is their officer. So now we wanna take him out of this building to give him some Bay County officer? So here we go again, no trust. They're losing another person. That's it, I guess, I can't.
Anybody else? Discussion from the board? All right, so we do have a closed session on the packet. We're going to go into closed session, this is for a student petition for reinstatement. We have a motion for a discussion.
Betafer?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Doofy?
Yes.
Holstein?
Yes.
Yaris?
Yeah.
Ravich?
Yes.
Kuchar?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. That concludes our business, except for this one item, and we'll only come back in the session to address this one item, so thank you for attending.